Everybody ready?
Ready.
Alright. Okay, and we'll call the meeting to order. Please stand for the choice of allegiance. We have a special meeting tonight.
The United States of America and to the Republic which is fair, one nation, undoubtful, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Item number one, approval of agenda. Is there any additions or deletions? Section to approve, second, all in favor. Seeing everybody votes yes, nobody against it, we approve the agenda. Presentations, item A, discussion and possible action on the town of Oakdale zoning ordinance and the town of Oakdale subdivision ordinance, there are no attachments. And this will go to Chancer and Henry.
I'll start it off. First, I'd like to thank the board for giving us, specifically Emily in the planning department, the opportunity to make some changes to the zoning ordinance. I will say what she's going to present that you invite is something that we've been trying to do for a while. There are several sections of the ordinance that need to be updated. There are several sections that need to be cross-referenced as we go through engineering-based developments. There are sections that cross-reference the Sampson spec sections, the cross-reference the stormwater ordinance. Nothing very complicated, but things that we feel address loopholes in our ordinance from pools not being directly tied into the stormwater regulations. Seventy-five percent rules for zoning approval in subdivisions, but they did not properly represent the Sampson specifications manual. We ended up hiring Tom Lloyd from Tom Lloyd Associates to assist us and consult us with this. So before I let Emily start, I wanted to read, he's running a little late, but I wanted to read a message from him that'll be your first slide. So from Mr. Lloyd, "The overall vision of Oakdale is to grow in an orderly, attractive, and functionally efficient manner while also being the stewardship of the environment. The submitted amendments are an attempt to implement this vision in the existing ordinances, keeping them both relevant and functional in a dynamic growth environment, which only will accelerate with the opening of 295. The goal of these amendments is to address some regulatory gaps and loopholes and to enhance the landscape as the town prepares for future growth. Hopefully, Oakdale will continue to be proactive in ensuring high-quality development. These amendments mark the beginning of further updates at the Southwest land use as the Southwest land use plan is revised. Hopefully, the town will continue to adopt the philosophy of incentivized development standards. With the advent of conditional zoning, we believe the town has an opportunity to require more landscaping, walking trails, and most importantly, berms along major and minor arteries. We aim to preserve the character of Rockfish, Camden, and Blackbridge roads." And as Tom comes in, "This can be accomplished by using conditional zoning to increase density of the parcel as it is petitioned for rezoning. In conclusion, the town should also explore other incentives to encourage higher development standards such as density bonuses, the use of right-of-way dedicated land for density calculations, streamlined permitting, and so forth. This allows the developer to spend more money on berms, walking trails, and landscaping while at the same time not incurring a loss. In summary, the town of Oakdale is poised to grow rapidly while at the same time we should take advantage of this growth pressure by turning it into a positive opportunity to raise development standards, ensuring top-quality growth with respect to both beauty and environmental stewardship." Now, I'll turn it over to our panel leader, Emily Wyler.
So we have here a summary of why do we need amendments. As trends change throughout urban and suburban areas, the zoning regulations that govern them have become outdated. Amendments to ordinances allow municipalities to account for changing conditions and to also ensure that they continue serving the needs of the community. From regulating development-related issues to addressing parking issues for businesses, more flexible zoning regulations can also positively impact property land use as well. The best practices include, although amending zoning and subdivision ordinances are useful tools to address changes in development trends, there are guidelines of best practices that should be followed in analysis or review of current regulations while identifying conflicts that can sometimes create barriers for development. Compliance with adopted land use plans is crucial to the creation of amendments that adequately address future development trends. This could also be utilized to determine if updates need to be made to the actual land use plan as well. The general public should be engaged through work sessions and public hearings to provide feedback to the affected businesses and residential communities. Over the past five years, Oakdale has experienced significant growth that continues to advance as development spans from single and multifamily residential to commercial and industrial projects. It is increasingly important to ensure our zoning and subdivision regulations adequately address new types of construction and development projects. Here we have a display summarizing different advantages to updating the ordinances. We have housing. Zoning changes can help align housing supply with demand through density requirements, reductions in lot sizes, or streamlined permitting processes. We have sustainable growth. Amendments to zoning ordinances can also lead to more efficient land use, which reduces urban sprawl. Development trends, amendments help to address negative development, development trends mutually shared between businesses and the general public at large. Flexibility, periodic changes to zoning regulations also provide flexibility with dealing with adverse effects of land development. New regulations help to ensure that growth happens in a manner that is consistent with the needs of citizens. And public participation. Amending zoning laws also provide citizens with an opportunity to be involved in a public hearing process. The first area that we are looking at addressing is actually the latest changes that were made to the zoning ordinance, whichever we just submitted last year, our overlay rules. And although the town recently adopted regulations under overlays that help to mitigate the saturation of certain commercial uses, that is one of the more stringent language needed to be included with two specific uses, the motor vehicle field and tobacco store slash smoke shop. The following amendments are proposed. To summarize, we more or less want to match up with what Cumberland County has just changed their ordinances to. So that includes the required lot size shall be one acre and shall not be located on Oakdale Road, North Main Street, South Main Street, Rockfish Road, Camden Road, Regent Road, Elkh Road, Blackbridge Road, or George Owen Road. And then with the tobacco store and smoke shop section, we are adding on to it, we're asking to add on, and shall be located no closer than 1,000 feet, measured from property line to property line to any religious worship activity, school, public or private, elementary or secondary or vocational, as listed in the matrix. So this is in the zoning ordinance. We have a section that requires that the town attorney approve the property owners' association documents, including arguments of incorporation bylaws and/or declaration of restrictive covenant, also known as homeowner associations, and we are asking to remove that. We've spoken with Dan on a few occasions about this. He has expressed to us that he does not regulate HOAs, and the town should not either. That's between the attorney that enforces the HOA and the HOA itself for subdivision. So we are asking that we take that out of our ordinance. This part is what Chancer mentioned earlier, the zoning pools. In one of my many permitting packets that I was issuing, someone was getting zoning pools, and I realized that the section expressed getting rid of water out of pools in a way that was completely opposite of what stormwater has been telling me for years. So I asked about that. We are doing this to update it to match the stormwater ordinance to dispose of water out This is something that Chancer's been talking about doing for a while. This is updating the landscaping ordinance to double the required planting that are required for commercial properties. So instead of that area of one large shade tree, he's asking for two. Instead of three, he's asking for six, doubling exactly what is normally required. And this is a continuation of that, asking for double what is required. Tree preservation, we came across a situation where someone wanted to clear several lots over by the lake, and that perked up stormwater's ears, and we're asking for pre-clearing inspection required that the property owner developer must schedule with the chief building inspector, which has always been. But we also want to add, and stormwater and floodplain administrator regardless of lot size and other stormwater land criteria, more or less to make sure for runoff purposes, then they address on the front end of clearing. This is to match up our legal sign section of the signed ordinance to the general statutes. For whatever reason, this would be cracked in the last update. We had in the ordinance that hill cliff design shall be thirty-two square feet, whereas the general statute actually says six square feet in the area for cliff design. So we are just trying to match up, so there's some discrepancies whenever that town calls for cliff design. And we are now in the subdivision section of the ordinance. This is where we are adding mention of the Oakdale standards and specifications manual I feel like I probably shouldn't read this one straight forward. So this is Article four, development improvement and design standards for public streets as follows. Town approval and acceptance of public street. No street shall be accepted for ownership by the town unless such street has been constructed and at the time is offered for dedication meets the standard set forth by the town of Oakdale standards and specifications manual. No street shall be maintained by the town until it is accepted into the town's street system. Until such time that the town accepts the public streets for maintenance, the developer and subsequent purchaser shall be responsible for maintenance and for securing final acceptance by the town. It shall be the responsibility of the developer to formally notify the town, public works department, and initiate the street acceptance process. The street acceptance process is not completed to include meeting...
Yeah, the street acceptance process.
Oh, yes, I'm sorry. Industry acceptance process...
I got a question. Can we get copies of this? Because I know we're struggling to see this too.
Yeah, yeah.
I'm sorry, I have another question as well. I was going to wait till you finished.
Industry acceptance process is not completed to include meeting all requirements and account standards and specifications manual, but at the time, the town building inspector has issued building permits for seventy-five percent of the lots shown on the flatted portion of the development. The town zoning official shall not issue or approve any additional permit until such time the street acceptance process is completed. And this is adding a new section to addition as well. The purpose of this ordinance, a street shall include all public infrastructure related to street construction located within a public right-of-way, including but not limited to travel lanes, curbing gutter, stormwater infrastructure, and sidewalk. And road maintenance shall mean the street are kept in good state of repair and that streets are able to be used for their intended purpose without any impediment. The developers shall not install or allow to be installed any items within the right-of-way which will have to be required to be accepted in the street by the town. Such items include but are not limited to fences, basements, or block, reports, shrubbery, and driveway markings.
Ma'am.
Yes?
I'm in the room. Can I ask a question on this?
Yes.
So we have a subdivision, and you've been educating me on this. So we have a new subdivision coming into the town. We do the subdivision plan review, or the... I lost my word here. We do the subdivision plan of the looking streets, the water sewer, all that stuff. I know y'all do the plan reviews on that. So they build it. So is the town staff going out doing inspections on all the underground stuff? In other words, are y'all do go out and do...
On priority destruction, all water can be removed, keep it clean.
So what I'm saying, which PWC owns their water and sewer system, so if it's a problem, they are responsible for that. If we're going out and... I can't really read that. I'd have to read it again when we get a copy of it. Did you say we were responsible for the underground stuff, like the utilities? How was that? Read that again for me. In other words, what I'm trying to get at is if they build the subdivision and we do the plan review, and then they're going out and looking at the underground stuff to make sure it's right, if Don or his assistant or somebody in his department's going out and making sure the underground's right before they cover it up, then once they build everything to our design or our spec, and we accept the road and we're accepting all that, I just wanted to make sure that town staff is going out there and looking at it before they cover it up and we're not accepting something that's not...
I'll address that. That's one of the reasons why we're making this change, because part of the street acceptance process requires that before you go to another phase, you have to initiate the street acceptance process where the developer has. At that point, Don and Bruce and Beth will come out. They'll give the developer a punch list item based on what David's thinking. That is all the infrastructure that's tied to the town that's stolen.
So we're actually inspecting as it's going in to make sure that it's going in properly. As you know, once it goes in, we've got erosion on site, we've got big trucks coming in and out putting stuff on the lot for houses, so there is an opportunity for that to get disturbed underground. So before we go out and do any inspection, there is a requirement to those cameras and clean them lines, so that when we go out to do our infrastructure inspection, we're looking at the roads, the curbs, the sidewalks. They're looking at it as it's going in, they're looking at what material is being put down underneath the curb. So there's a pre-inspection as it's going in, and then there's an inspection before we bring it to you guys for accepting. And that's in the street. When they petition the town to take over the street, so there's multiple inspections that occur by town staff prior to us bringing it to you all.
And what's happening with the zoning is they're referencing that section of the standards and specs and the stormwater ordinance and the zoning ordinance. So what typically happens is, and we say the seventy-five percent rule, if you have a multi-phase development with multiple phases, if you get up to seventy-five percent completion of that previous phase, you have to initiate the street acceptance process before you move forward. We're putting in there now language that references the Sampson specification manual, which is that entire process that Mel spoke about. And I was talking about the final process at the very end, but she is correct, they're on-site prior to, during, and at the end. And so our staff is looking at just about all of that stuff. Now, PWC, like you said, wants to assume that's done by them, but what we're doing with the zoning ordinance is cross-referencing that section of regulatory control that's tied to the Sampson specification.
Thank you, Mary. Thank you, everybody, for that answer. I felt confident that we were, I just wanted to, you know, I just want to make sure that our staff was able to look at this underground stuff too, if we're, you know, accepting and taking responsibility. I feel that is our staff.
And I will add too, based on what I said at the very beginning with these changes, a lot of these changes are being birthed out of our conversations at plan review. We're always constantly talking about projects, so where there's a gap or a loophole, it appears that one of the ordinances may allow, we're cleaning that up with a lot of the stuff in the zoning and subdivision ordinances. I would say the large majority, outside of the landscaping requirements that we've talked about doing for a couple of years, the majority of these changes are birthed out of extensive conversations that were happening, where you're trying to just make sure that the process from zoning approval of the house to start construction and the full development of subdivision through those different departments, everything is pretty key's crossed out.
Chancer, that's key, because everything is looked at on the very front end of these projects before they get down the road and to a point of finger pointing to some degree. If we tighten it up on the front end, then that will help us on the back end when the project comes to the board. So, yes, that's right. Any other question? You got one? Okay.
Well, no, that's a silly question, but just the part where it's under the landscaping, it's under oak tree preservation, and number two, the pre-clearing inspection, that is, I think that'll help us in the long run, because a lot of the issues we've had of people saying, well, we didn't have problems when the trees were there, and now we're like, it was no problem, it's not because of the trees. This will, I think, mitigate a lot of the issues that we're having, so that's good.
So this section addresses sidewalks, and this is also tying into the standards and specifications manual. So when a residential development with a density greater than or equal to 2.2 units per acre is proposed, sidewalks are required on both sides of all streets proposed within the development and along any existing minor thoroughfare or higher plus fish street. And we are removing this bottom section because it actually read, streets ending with a cul-de-sac or hammerhead turnaround when less than 500 feet in length are not required to have sidewalks. And then also mentioned sidewalks are also not required around a boll with any cul-de-sac or T-type in name of any hammerhead. So we are asking to remove those sections because that would give exception to the requirement of sidewalks. And we are also moving to require the sidewalks be at least 60 inches to match the DOT requirements and the standards and specification requirements.
No, I've seen the, or granted, I'm ready to get it, but we're talking about the four-inch thickness. So there's a method to the madness, because I've seen people commenting, why is there so much concrete used for the sidewalk? And I mean, I guess it's to ensure it's durable and it doesn't last just for one year.
So Bruce and Don will be able to answer that much better than me, but I would assume it is there to be able to deal with the weight over time and to last a certain amount of time at least before bringing maintenance starts picking at. This one is connection, answer, steward, public water required. We are asking to include, including any group development as defined in this ordinance which falls within five percent. And this helps to clean up a lot of questions as to whether or not annexation is needed for certain projects. This is a section that includes parks and recreation, open space as follows. This is where it was mentioned in the opening statement from Mr. Tom Lloyd, and it mentions to include walking trails and berms. And then it's, I will say, as a side note, we are also wanting to correct change throughout the ordinance. A lot of it says county, whereas we don't deal with the county for these projects anymore, so we're proffing that out to the town of Oakdale. And I believe there's a lot of references to the zoning ordinance is enforced by the building inspector, whereas we don't do that anymore, it's the zoning administrator. So those are some random changes that we're trying to do throughout the ordinance as well to update it. But this one also mentions berms, walking trails. I'll just read. It's setting paragraph of this section. Recreation areas, berms, and walking trails shall be of such dimensions as to be functionally usable and maintainable. Developments that would require less than 25,000 square feet of recreation area and be exempt from providing onsite recreation areas when walking trail and or berms are not capable, such as term with plant dirt or annual parts of recreation work, is determined at... And it continues on. We have mentioned that the open space, minimum of 1,250 square feet of land for each boll unit or lot, and this is mentioning that the recreational space shall be continuous. Onsite recreation area, ex-urban, walking trails cannot be combined in such areas serving adjacent properties to form functionally usable, maintainable area. This is another cross out of county. And then the last section on this page mentions that usability, the maximum of what happens to the required recreation area may be watered but not intended for stormwater to touch
I need to get back to the... But I'm trying to read the PHL document. Can we get back to the development improvement and design standards? It talks about, where essentially the developer proposes two to 20 lots within 500 feet of existence, public water, sewer, the public facilities shall be extended and connected to within the new subdivision or other developer, including any group development as defined in the ordinance which falls within 500 feet. So what happened, I mean, so what happened just becomes then they do it, and I've run into this all the time, with major and minor subdivision. So we'll have somebody will come in and they'll permit four houses, build them. When they get them done, they come in, permit four more, but now you got a subdivision. Now you got a major subdivision. So with the 500-foot requirement, because you have to have a height within 500 foot of a single family dwelling in the town, and I'm shorting the fire ordinance for the town, it talks about height within 400 foot of commercial development, but would it be good to take that two out, two to 20 lots out? Just if they build a house and it's within 500 feet?
You could.
Put it on the back of the developer and say, you gotta do this.
You could. There's a lot of layers of this, the two to 20, but it's also if you're within 500 feet of resistance or sewer, you have to trigger annexation as well. The reason why we made this change is it never mentioned group developments with your partners. So let's say you had a 10-acre lot and you were not doing a subdivision, you were just developing that 10-acre lot with 400 units. You didn't hit the two to 20 lot threshold. So adding, including any group development was eliminating the loophole that allowed someone to develop a large lot in the MIA without having to annex it. The two to 20 hasn't presented itself as an issue for us with developers coming in, because typically if you're within that 500 feet of water and sewer, you gotta come in anyway. And so there are little things, but the loophole we were trying to stop with this change was if they're doing an apartment complex, they're not subdivided at all. They can have a 300, I mean, a 20-acre lot that's not being subdivided without putting that new language in there, they wouldn't be required because they're not creating subdivision. So it's little stuff, but I get your point in terms of, does that two to 20 give you pause in terms of a loophole? What we're looking at so far, it hasn't presented itself as an issue. We, and that's attributed to our public, I mean, our plan review team, we meet and coordinate with developers at such an extensive level. We meet, we meet and coordinate with developers at such an extensive level. The annexation is part of just something we're telling them they have to go through procedurally. Uh, we do talk to them extensively, um.
And what I'm, what I'm looking at is if it's in an area that doesn't have water or sewer, high.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
I would, I would say if it, if you build anything within five hundred feet, you gotta connect and you gotta put in, that saves us money down the road because eventually at some point, if we annex it, we gotta provide that water. That water and sewer, then that's a cost to us at that point.
I, I see.
Which the developer's gonna do it, they're just gonna put it in the price of the home.
Now, I would say too, anything we present this evening that you guys want us to tweak, you have that authority as well, but I think Tom won't.
I was gonna add something real quick. We do have a section in our zoning ordinance, one oh two A dash one five zero three I. And it states extension and connection to water, public water and or sewer. If extension and connection would be required, I know the provisions of chapter eighty-six, which is the subdivision ordinance. If the development consists of non-residential uses or mixed use and utilities are present within the right of way or if any adjacent lot is served by utilities, extension and connection is mandatory. So that kind of also covers the permits with the subdivision.
But I'm not trying to do.
Oh, that's what you have to be. If there's a section, yeah, if there's a section that you guys want us to go a little further. The purpose of tonight is to get either a blessing with these changes or any amendments to these changes. That's it, that's it.
Of course, I mean, it's up to the rest of the board too. And if you're, if you're sitting here telling us that you have a run into that problem and you don't feel like it's gonna be a problem, then I take that recommendation. And, you know, we, we live like kids, but I just, you know, I'm just looking down the road and costs measures and savings to the town. And the developer's gonna do it, they're gonna want to build, they're gonna want to do it, so they're gonna do it, that's just cost of doing business for me.
The reason why that's true is in order to follow this ordinance, when you regulate, it's gotta be something, gotta be something like. The lot already exists. It's not gonna be subject, it's just gonna get a building from it to extend, so. And that's why it's true, you have that two or more, you know, to become subdivision. Unless you're a group development, that's why they're throwing the group development in there and building more than one structure on, on the lot. But if the lot already exists, it won't be subject to the subdivision's ordinance to make it extend with restraint.
And you're talking about if they're just building one house?
Right, yeah. If you build more than one on that lot, then yeah, that's just taken.
And as she goes, uh, back to, uh, the, the sheet she was on, I will, I want to highlight the open space piece. Um, that is initially the big piece that's tied to that is us eliminating the pay in lieu. Because typically that has been used as a, a loophole to eliminate the need for an HOA. So what happens is a lot of these existence subdivisions that are built, if we're running in the street acceptance processes and you don't have an HOA, you have nobody to actually, uh, that's gonna be responsible for that maintenance, which is creating the deeper surface of the road. So by changing that and requiring open space, usable open space, they are required to dedicate to the town a berm, a walking trail, some type of park, I'll give you a prime example. Uh, if you're doing a subdivision close by here, you're in close proximity to this park, it's well as the golf course. But if you're off Chickenfoot Road, you're building almost eight hundred houses that are the furthest away from the town. So now where La Marco Morrison comes into play, where he's actually actively searching for more park space for the larger subdivision, they're gonna be required to have some type of active open recreational use that could potentially be dedicated to the town or at least dedicated to the HOA. So now I don't have to drive from San Yolero Road on Chickenfoot all the way to the golf course just to get to the park and have a park within my neighborhood. He's not to do it, but it's enhancing the actual community as well because it's a selling point for us, subdivision, if you have an active park with.
See, I like this answer because now a mandate with developers that you will provide open space. Because what they're doing now is four acres of potential.
How, how much will it cost them if they chose to pay us instead of getting?
There's a calculator, there go, there's a formula that goes into a certain amount per size of, per lot. So it's not a, a flat fee. Um, so if you have a small, and then there are thresholds that we put in place too, if it's a lot that's not big enough beyond a certain size, it wouldn't kick in. But if you have these larger subdivisions, based on the size of subdivision and the number of lots, that dictates the amount. Um, if you recall, we removed the same thing with sidewalks, there was a pay in lieu of sidewalk. When I first got here, that was eliminated because you could just pay a fee and just not have sidewalks. It's more important to have the sidewalks, so we just eliminated the ability to pay them.
Mr. Mayor, um, well, I have against taking, uh, uh, lots, getting paid for the lots, or, let me get it right. Anyway, who we get paid for the lots or they give them to us? They always give us the land that's like this, on steep hill. We've got that now over in, um, across the street behind that subdivision. Uh, the end of the green drag in there, we have lots like that. So I don't want those lots to get used on what usable lots.
You're talking about unusable ones.
They're unusable now.
It's open space, yeah.
Very open.
And they, and they need to be usable.
Yes.
So that language, we need to include something that requires a definition of what usable open space is. We can add that.
Should be left up to La Marco's.
He said that they're usable, they're functionally usable.
But their definition of usable could be like, well, that hill they can skateboard down. So, yeah, that's usable, so maybe, I don't know.
Do you want a more specific definition?
Yes, yes.
Yes. Go ahead. Was that it? What you got, Tom?
What she said is right, it's relative. You know, what, what I may think is usable, you know, vice versa. So it's really something to think about when you put it in ordinance because, and I mean, it may not be safe for it. But it could be, they say, for five, so it's a time. But I'm all seeing this as a struggle, it's gonna be difficult. I'm not saying it can't be done, but we, we all need on that, if you try, if everybody's on board with what is useful to maintain it, easier to use, use it. It depends on what you all want it to be able to be used for.
Just make sure they don't give a single, it has power lines or like they tried to do over in Eaglewood back a few years ago. They donated the land for a park, but it was, had all those big utility codes, you know, which I went. So we made them go in and that's when we got the land across the street over there for a park. And they were trying to give us those.
Yeah, that, that's important, but the useful part now, I agree with you. All, we all agree, but look at, if it's a walking trail. Okay, if it's a walking trail, would you consider regular walking, when you have, you know, it depends on what kind of walking trail you would be wanting.
And, and I do agree with Mr. Lloyd saying because if you're looking at the backside of our golf course, the wetland areas, you put trails in it. So we're not talking about building structures. We're just basically saying, don't take your wetland area and just put the attention on it and that's it. You know, you gotta be creative. So if you are doing a walking trail, that's not necessarily a park, but you can be creative in the typically unbuildable areas of your development where you're not putting houses, but you can enhance that with walking trails and things of that nature. So we can tweak the language, but I, I would caution against being very specific. But where it says the land has to be continuous, um, and things of that nature, we can strengthen that language a little bit. Um, to make sure that you're at least given them the ability or requirement to enhance those areas, but not to the point where you're kind of pigeonholed into something.
We don't want, we don't want to do that.
Yeah.
Well, maybe like thinking like, you know, limit the amount of grade to the road, like no more than a one percent, two percent grade. So there are no steep hills or something like that, just, you know, I mean, thinking that kind of aspect, that way it's usable for everyone. Not someone with a wheelchair that's only going to speed down hills.
Well, I think if Don correct me, couldn't we just make it, uh, requirements plus ADA accessible? Because that should handle any steep slopes and anything like that, I don't mind.
ADA open space is very.
Subjective.
Not very, and fine, geography plays a lot in your ADA stuff, but it's just in geography. Um, they do not want to make cumbersome measures change.
That's kind of, we, we, we're exploring that.
Let's just bring back some language to define what open space is. Some research with other municipalities might be doing.
For instance, a walking trail, you could be less restrictive than another type of recreation. There was a grade maybe of these steep work that's applied to some of the walking trails on the recreation area, you know, you don't want the steep slope.
Well, you don't want steep slopes, you don't want power lines. You don't want cliffs and gullies and, and that's what you don't want. So I think, you know, if we can really define what open space is. And we know that we want to include, you know, the definition of recreational use. There's so many neighborhoods and divisions that really want some type of recreational opportunity for, for the residents of living in those neighborhoods. And I think the developers should have to pay their way out, they should volunteer, want to come in and do that for the, for the quality of the project.
Mayor, that's one of the things that Mr. Lloyd was talking about in terms of incentivizing. There are ways to meet right in the middle, what I call a sweet spot, where you're adding requirements that if you coordinate properly with developers, it's gonna enhance their development. Nobody wants to be so heavy handed that it kills the profit margins of an entire development because now you don't have the development. And so that doesn't mean that we're for developers, that just means that we're doing things in a way that help benefit us all. It's a quality development, it's a quality product that he's building, but we also are providing open space to our citizens in a way that allows the project to sit forward, but addresses concerns and needs that we have.
But do they put that on the map of a homeowner? Like when they're, when they're putting?
If you're, if you're, I'll give you a prime example, the neighborhood I'm in right now. Um, the price point for phase two went down drastically because of the U.S. And so what happens is this type of incentive base, you're not gonna kill profit margin by putting in a trail or a park. We're not losing lots. We're just saying that some of that area, you have to make it something that's a little bit more usable. But it's when you're pushing it too far, that they're just gonna turn it over and now the price points are drastically increased as a result of that. Or things of that nature, that's when it becomes a little bit heavy handed. So when we say incentivized, that's not me, we're giving something to them. It's a give and take where we're asking for something, but there's something that we can provide concessions on that does not eliminate the spirit of what we're trying to do with them. But what you're talking about is the key, when you start seeing that the price points are drastically higher and it's because of us, uh, regulating them a little bit too heavy handed, that's when it becomes a problem.
Yeah, I don't want to say that either, and, and maybe La Marco can weigh in some language on what open space would look like. My other question here would be, uh, does Parks and Rec have any input, um, on the planning piece of open space before it's approved?
That's something we can add in that, that is what, just like we added in Stormwater.
Yeah. I want to include La Marco's in, in that piece.
There's one thing I want to add to, I don't know, so, um, based on, you know, with that calculation, how much land they, they are required to give us. Um, there's about four categories of parks. Um, neighborhood will be your, your, your smaller park, which is two acres or less. Those don't require parking lots, typically don't because they are, they are designed for people to be able to walk or bike to that neighborhood park. Um, then you go to, um, a community park, which is slightly larger, which parking theoretically is required. And that's when you start getting to slope because you don't want your, your parking area to be more than four percent, four percent slope, you know, for parking reasons and things of that nature. So I think some language, when we talk about the size of the lot that's required, then it gets into the different categories of parks and what's required parking wise and things of that nature. I think that might, that might set the standard a little bit about, you know, what the requirement's gonna be as far as open space, depending on the acreage, um, size of the park and things of that nature. But I, I got some language that, that I'm using to pass, that I can pass along to some of the commissioners.
Very good, thanks.
Very good, I like that.
This is a continuation of mentioning that we're improving the things, uh, being new thorough. And also mention that designation of land to be decades, developers on delivery of the preliminary plan shall indicate at times of intent to convey contiguous lands to the subdivision unless approved by the board commissioners. So that would be an exception that the commissioners can consider should they be brought to. And this is more of just correcting going from town to town. This is a, a brand new section that we worked with, Public Works, to add, to conform our special developments, group developments. Um, examples will be groups of townhouses, apartments. So this mentions dumpsters, solid waste collection, all group development, three or more units shall be required to have common areas designated specifically for solid waste collection. Dumpster areas shall be constructed according to the dummy ordinance and subdivision ordinance. If individual trash containers are to be used in the area not in front of or any dwelling unit nor in any street right way will be designated and maintained by the homeowners association, homeowners association or its committee shall be responsible for establishing collection schedules and contracts. Requests for exceptions to section shall, to section shall permit waiver requests to offer a sound direction.
So, so what are we doing? And when, when we look here at this one, three or more units required to have common area designated specifically for solid waste connect, collection. And this is going to be managed with oversight from the HOA.
Yes, this is to help avoid a development having like seventy to ninety trash can.
Right.
Putting out at the street, whereas you just have one section for collection to happen to help keep the neighborhood.
I like that, I do, I, I, I like that. But the, the tricky part here is requiring the homeowner association to enforce it. That could be the tricky part, I, I don't know, I have to think, I do have to give this some thought. Because Dan is recommending that we not oversee HOA.
So I think that we're enforcing it, the HOA has to maintain it. That's the difference, I'll give a prime example that, uh, the development behind there, Bagels. Uh, how many units of townhouses, Bob? Hundred and twenty townhouses. Trash can a piece, two trash cans, that's two hundred and forty trash cans up the street. Or they can do a cluster, one dumpster pad in the, at the end, two or three during the middle, and one at the end. But the HOA maintains this, it's just like a regular apartment complex, but it was a loophole, we didn't have anything else subdivision board. So it's nothing different than an apartment complex maintaining their dumpster area. We have sections in our zoning ordinance that requires that it be screened three sided with bridge and things of that nature. But it's helping, really stems in specifications manual, enforcing that, and we're helping to reinforce that in the zoning.
So my next question is, is how is it gonna be built? If we maintain three of the, three of these, these units, these dumpsters, how are they gonna be built and make sure that they're secure?
That's where the zoning or the subdivision ordinance requires. That's where the zoning or the subdivision ordinance requires the three sided screening, um, and that's standard. So it's just like if they was doing one of the apartment complexes or commercial development. And so their regulations on how it's built is already there. We were just saying, we didn't have a section in our subdivision ordinance that actually required it like the standards and specs requires. Uh, but it's not an issue where we're hoping that, uh, HOA regulates the, uh, construction of them. They're required to construct them based on our regulations, it's just we don't have to maintain them because we don't maintain commercial, uh, dumpster pads or apartments anyway, apartments aren't considered to be commercial. So if we don't maintain those, we wouldn't maintain these, but we are requiring them so that you don't, we don't have to actually, uh, it's just helping to reinforce what, uh, Public Works.
They don't usually go to the, um, the company that they contract their waste management with and they'll get with them and they'll decide because they have to put them in places where the, the trucks can gun in and not get involved with the cars and this type of thing.
That's right.
They'll take care of all that.
Okay, Emily.
Um, now I can understand that we need to come back with, uh, the question. So originally this was the timeline we were looking at, doing September work session, which is today, and going before the planning board wants to approve of the list. And then I think that we'll bring that team for adoption, so, uh, the timeline obviously is different now, but that's fine.
Emily, I'm going back through the slides, go back to where we're referencing the smoke vape shops. Yeah, go back to that. Because I noticed today, and I said this earlier, on Camden, beside Shell Station is a new one called Huff and Puff Vape. Now.
I just add, don't, didn't see where we had.
Well, but it's not in the, in the town of Oak Mill.
I don't believe it is, I, I actually haven't had a look at it.
But nonetheless, here it is, and that's close by to, uh, I think a daycare position.
I believe you're right.
Yeah.
I don't know if this is in a thousand feet.
Yeah, I don't know if it's within a thousand. So my question is, how do we regulate vape, smoke shops in the MIA? Cause we have donuts, you can, okay, we don't.
The MIA is the development standard, it's this, it's not preserved, so.
It would just be considered something outside our limits.
Well, yeah, this is a new one, and I just happened to notice the sign today, so if I hadn't seen it anywhere until it's a little, it's a little building, it's a residential building, that I guess someone has taken, and now they're gonna put a vape, smoke shop in there called Huff and Puff.
And if I'm not mistaken, isn't it a church in that supposition? No, 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 it's not, it's, no, no. Um, and I would say that, I mean, the existing overlay we had, it could be within a mile of another one. We're now adding a thousand people, a school, a church or a liturgy. Think what you're talking about, Mayor, is that conundrum where you have those old holes where technically we don't have to leave the doorway, direct it some outside our limits.
But there are opportunities, yeah. Would you agree, Tom, that I'll need opportunities?
There are, and there're not, these other words, stability, but they look by the pure definition, and I'm trying to remember the play word name now, but if the definition or regulation reads a thousand foot from, from another, it doesn't say a thousand foot from another in the jurisdiction of the county, and Hope Mills doesn't say a thousand foot from another, it didn't say Hope Mills, it just says a thousand feet away. So I personally don't know, it can't be how they issued permit that unless they in person to me, what's a thousand foot from another in the county. But if you only technically read a thousand feet from another shop is defined herein, it, it shouldn't matter what jurisdiction it's in.
That's my point, that is.
And I think that's something probably to talk to the counties about. Um, and, and what I'm remembering, they're only paying for that definition. I know it doesn't say another vape or smoke shop in the county, it just says that anyway. So I think it's the way it's enforced, there really shouldn't be doubt, it's a thousand feet.
Yeah, regardless.
Right.
Of jurisdiction, right, and, and that's why I'm going back to that point. I'm not against vape shops at all or any business, I just wanna be ethical and play by the rules and be good community stewards. That's all I'm asking for, it's just that.
Uh, Mayor, I will say that, uh, after the press conference that we just recently had, even this language was in place prior to that. Um, we, we already have an extensive conversation with, uh, PB and legal to talk about actually regulating smoke shops. So I think that might be an opportunity for us to set up a separate, um, session just specifically that, but this is gonna get very complicated. And I think I wanna go a little further than what's here, but with that new, uh, set of circumstances, we are looking at this a little bit more closely than just a thousand feet, I don't think we're ready right now. I do think the thousand feet is fine, but I do think we are probably gonna be coming back to you guys pretty shortly to regulate just that use a little bit more creatively, because there's a lot of layers to, to regulate those uses.
Emily, do we have any vape shops that conflict with the change of the ordinance?
Oh, for sure, yeah.
And, and if that answer is yes, then I guess we will have to grandfather them in.
As, as I understand, if they close the shop for a year or more, they cannot be opened in that location, they will have to find another location that is compliant with the current ordinance.
Is that, that's in the county?
Yeah, your typical grandfather clause also indicates what Emily just said, and if it's destroyed more than fifteen years, then there's a place to go. If both of those things happen, one cavity, yeah, I'm operating, I'm sure one of you can consider requesting that, that's what how they, they.
Okay.
I'm gonna come back to you, I'm gonna find out about that, because I can remember what we recommended approval at the planning board for that amendment, which is basically the same. And questioned the next planning board meeting this month as to how they got a permit, because it doesn't specify what jurisdiction it's in, it just says another shop. I'm gonna try to get an answer for you.
I appreciate that, Tom, because I was gonna reach out to Betty Lynn with the same question as well, our joint planning board representative, of how they got a permit for that building, how did that happen? Any other questions? We're good? All right, I think we're good, Emily.
Make the motion reset until it's ready when you need it.
Uh, we need a motion to adjourn because. Motion to adjourn, second, in favor? Saying not approved, we are adjourned in a special meeting. We'll start our regular meeting in about five minutes, just to give the board members a little time right as well. Use the, uh, solid.